Good afternoon, everybody. This is a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is June 17th of 2021. First item that we have is a roll call, please.
Here it is. I'll be glad to do it. Chairman Erasmo Villar.
Present.
Jorge Dominguez. Rafael Duñez.
Present.
Abraham Lugo. Johnny M Narviles.
Present.
Raúl Valdez Jr.
Present.
Larissa Valina.
Here.
Aniela Sadapás. And Ana Gabriela Villar.
Present.
For the record, you do have one.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Lugo Dominguez and Daniela?
So moved.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have, can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item that we have is the consideration of the approval of minutes of June 3rd, 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. And the next item, Citizens' Comments. Do we hear anybody write down, signed up for Citizens' Comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right. The next item is review and consideration of the following master plans. Okay. The first one that we have is reviewing.
For the record, we have the question.
Okay, for the record, we have Commissioner Daniela that's just arrived. Thank you. Review and revision of the San Isidro Northeast subdivision master plan. The intent is residential, commercial, and institutional existing. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure and combine phases.
All right. Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is San Isidro Northeast Limited. The engineer of record is Slay Engineering, approximately 800 acres, located north of Balboa Loop and east of East Point Drive. All uses are residential, commercial, and institutional. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed master plan. We have the comments from planning. Water utilities. Traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
All right. Do we have the engineer of record?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ramiro Víctor. I work for Slay Engineering, and I'm the engineer for this master plan. We concur with all the comments except for the planning comment number four, which is the comment for a dead-end street that exceeds 500 feet. And I would like to, I guess, explain the situation that we have for this subdivision. There's a lot of elevation difference for this phase, so we're kind of locked in where we have the extent of, it's called Street B here on the agenda, but it's called Las Colinas. We're planning Las Colinas, right? We're kind of locked in on how much we can extend that street, and so we're kind of locked in on that length. It's feasible, the way we have it right now, to make sure that the lots on, the lots that are fronting the San Isidro Elementary School, in order for them to work, we need to have the intersection where we have it right now. The total length right now is approximately 650 feet. I know we're over the 500 feet, but I was, I wanted to see if we can get approval without that comment. I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. So the issue for the length of the street is an elevation is different, to be able to come into a 90 intersection, is that what you got?
That, and also, that block was laid out that way because it's on top of a hill. I know we cannot do to, you know, there's no counters on the plan, but in reality, if you go to the side, it's on top of a hill, and that street is right at the center. So that kind of dictates how much we can extend that street. I can try to make the street shorter, but that will make those lots that are right on the corner with a view extremely long, and, I mean, it just wouldn't work. So we're kind of locked in on the surrounding terrain that we have.
Okay. All right. Does anybody in the commission have any questions for the engineer?
I just want to visualize it more. Is there, can you put the map up? Can you describe what you're?
You can tell.
Yeah.
Let me show the phase one, because it's part of this one as well.
Is that? You have a, there we go. But do you have an aerial of it?
Describe how your, what your. What the comment.
If you look at the aerial, you see where, kind of where that arrow is pointing, you will see that there's like, there's vegetation all around, but there's a strip of bare land, let's say, that there's not, like, no vegetation at all. That's where that street is laid out right now. And it's right at the top of the hill. So what we're trying to do is excavate a little bit down and make the center of the street right there and just have lots with a view. And so we're locked into that strip of narrow.
You don't have a pointer where he can point to the lot, please, sir?
Because there's two.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. That street is right here. I can't see.
I can't see the pointer. Where's the pointer?
Here?
No, no.
So in the 80s, they would just walk up to the thing. I can walk up, yeah. Top of where that street is located. And this is in the older map, but Cabatines around here, so that street, you know, connects through here. So this is elevated, it's like 20, this point here is like maybe 40 feet higher than over here. So we're kind of tied into a type of terrain that we have here. That's one thing. The other thing, I don't know if you noticed, but we have a lot of empty space. We're trying to do, this is a different approach that we're doing. We're trying to do a grid like you see here. What we're trying to do is leave as much vegetation untouched, so we're trying to maintain and leave all this area the way it is. I know there's not a lot, but we're just going to leave the brush there. So I guess that was the main thing. We're kind of tied into.
I have a question.
I have no issue.
It's okay.
I have no issue. We're removing the comment.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead, John.
So based on this explanation, as far as elevation of the hill, how do you all still feel about your comment there that's been placed?
I mean, ultimately, it's a decision of the commission. I mean, there are some valid terrain issues that they do have there, and I do understand that they're trying to preserve the view on that area. It's actually quite nice view of Laredo, so, I mean, again, it's up to the commission. The distance, it does exceed the 500, but I mean.
On the ordinance.
I would make a motion to remove the comment and to approve subject to the other conditions. We have a motion. Do we have a second? A second from Raúl Valdez. Before I ask for the vote, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
In terms of that street being built with a 20-foot elevation difference, how is that going to impact your sheet flow on your drainage? How are you going to be able to handle that?
Well, those lots are going to be drained to the front. So it's not gonna.
But it's coming like this, the street, right? Because it drains to the street.
Yes.
It's like this, right?
We are running on the curb. Well, the majority of the water that will be collecting on top of that street will be down through a. I've got a very curbing it.
Curbing gutter.
Yes, sir.
All right. So the street's going to be where you're going to drain. You're using the street as a drainage?
Yes, sir. Well, we're going to drain the street, and right where the cul-de-sac is, we're going to have a curbing net, and we're going to take it.
Okay. You're going to take it underground and then to whatever drainage system exists.
Yes, sir.
San Isidro or something, right?
Yes. There's the, I guess the low point will be that big rectangle on top is San Isidro Elementary School. So just on the southeast corner, that's where, southwest corner, that's the low. That's where we're taking it.
That's where you're going to collect your, okay. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those against signify. For nothing hurt, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item that we have is review and revision to Park View at Century South Park master plan. The purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phases and remove a street. The intent is residential and commercial.
For the record, the applicant is XTX Land Development. The engineer of record is Sherfy Engineering, approximately 20 acres, located south of Jaime Zapata Memorial Highway and west of Century City Boulevard. The zoning for this 104 lot development is R1A and B3, and the proposed use is residential and commercial. This is a general location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Water utilities. Traffic. Parks and leisure. And there are some additional comments from Texas Department of Transportation, which are up on the screen, as well as in a packet that was left at your stations, and they have also been provided to the engineer. And the proposed motion.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir, Frank?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Frank Estrada with Sherfy Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
All right. Does anybody in the commission have any questions? Mr. Estrada?
No.
No question? All right. We have a motion.
I move to approve subject to the following comments.
We have a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Duñez. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item that we have is consideration of the following preliminary plans and preliminary replats. Preliminary consideration of the plan of San Isidro Northeast Las Palmas subdivision. The intent is residential and commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is San Isidro Northeast subdivision limited. The engineer of record, Slay Engineering, approximately 33 acres, located east of Bucky Haldman and north of Simon Bolivar. The zoning for this 64 lot development is R1, proposed use is residential and commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning. Utility coordination, water utilities. Traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Good afternoon again. Ramiro Víctor, Slay Engineering. We concur with all the comments, except for the same comment as before. This is comment number five, and it's the dead-end length of that exists over 500.
Any questions for the engineer? All right. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve subject to the same change that we did on the previous.
Removing comment number five. Okay. And a second? And a second? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat, Block 1, Block 1, basket, industrial subdivision. The intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Bacassan Holdings LLC. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group, approximately 17 and 3/4 acre, located north of Doc Adams Drive and Kilam Industrial Boulevard. The zoning for this one lot development is M1, and the proposed use is industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning. Engineering and utility coordination. Water utilities and traffic safety. We do have these additional comments from Texas Department of Transportation, which were provided as well to the engineer. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ricardo Villar with Top Site Civil Group. We concur with everybody's comment on here. We just want to clarify something, that the northern boundary of Bacassan is the right-of-way line for Viasio. So I know there were several comments in there from Texas, from traffic. So that is the southern boundary for Viasio, as it currently is a lot.
All right. Any questions for the engineer? No questions? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
My proposed motion approved.
Whatever, motion. Commission arranges to approve.
Second.
And a second. Commission inside. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plat, Block 1, Block 1, San José Commercial subdivision. The intent is commercial.
For the record, the applicant is Ranchos San José Limited. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group, approximately 1.93 acres, located at the south of the corner of Remington Drive and US Highway 59, and the zoning for this one lot development is B3, and the proposed use is commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan. Comments from planning and engineering. Utility coordination and water utilities. Safety, and some additional comments from Texas that were not in the original packet. And the proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ricardo Villar with Top Site Civil Group, again, representing the client. We do have just one question for the utility comment number one. It might be just specific to something that they're going to require later on, but the comment basically states that we need to have a conceptual plan to loop the lines there. It might just be wording. The way this site is laid out, they have fire hydrants both frontage on US 59 and Remington Road with the correct distances for, in case a commercial building comes in, so loop lines do not need to be looped for this specific site. I don't know, they just mean submit a site plan and then check, or, but I guess the way it's written is, it's kind of saying that we need to loop the lines, and we're just providing services for the lots, so.
Yeah, but comment number two, the utility coordination?
No, on utilities.
Or water and utility?
Water and utilities, yes.
When that is flat in conflict with TX dot?
No, it's this one, the water utilities need conceptual utility plan for water and sanitary sewer mains to be looped. Any off-site improvements need to have easements, which I think any off-site improvements, yeah, they do need to have easements, but I guess, the way I'm reading the comment is that we need to provide a utility plan so that we can loop the lines, but in this case, we don't need to loop the lines. So it might be something that, if we just can approve it based off of one-stop shop.
And that's what I was going to say. You could take care of that at one-stop. Yeah.
I know. It's just basically the way we're reading it, that they're requiring us to loop lines, and this is not the case.
All right. Any questions from the commissioners?
I don't see the comment that he's being.
Can you put it up, so?
It's comment number one on the water and utilities.
Water and utilities, number, comment number one.
This one?
That's what he's talking about. That's what he's talking about.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay? Any other questions for the engineer? Nobody? All right, enough.
Motion to approve subject to the comments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Johnny Narviles. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Lorenza Plat, Lot 1, Block 1, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Gilberto Valdez Jr. He, Jr., of record is TEC Engineers and Consultants, approximately 1 and 1/4 acre, located west of Balboa Loop and south of Casablanca Road, and the zoning for this one lot development is B4 and R3, and the proposed use is residential. Per location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan, along with improvement survey. Comments from planning and engineering. Utility coordination, water utilities, and traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good evening. All of the Torres from Tech Engineers. We agree with all the comments except for water and utilities. At the end of comment number one, is it not recommended to preliminary acceptance? I don't get it. If we don't get here for preliminary, how are we supposed to know what kind of comments we're supposed to meet?
Okay, that's a good question. Vanessa Ralph?
When, I don't know exactly what, how, why their comment is worded that way. When we had spoken to Texas, they had shown us a preliminary design of a potential widening for the loop in that area. I do believe that they can work this out at a one-stop shop and meet with Texas as well. I mean, that's how high I would perceive that they should go forward with this.
This is preliminary.
Yeah, it is preliminary, and they can meet with Texas. It seemed like it might be a very slight impact.
Okay.
But just to keep that in mind.
You have an existing, you don't have an existing entrance there right now, do you? On the property?
Yeah. Yeah, there is.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like, it hasn't. It doesn't, it doesn't have an entrance. Well, inside.
The entrance is on Casablanca. That's not made.
The entrance is on Casablanca, and Texas had shared with us a schematic where they want to kind of loop around and add an additional lane. Now, taken.
Twenty years?
That's why I asked you if he has an existing entrance right now, so, I mean, on Casablanca.
Yes, he does. Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, this comment, yeah. Yeah, you can work it out at one-stop shop without a problem. Any other questions? From anybody? No? What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve subject to the following comments.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
And a second by Ana Villar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. The next item. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Las Misiones subdivision, Unit 10. The intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Akero Management 2 LLC. The engineer of record is Fortis Engineering, approximately 2 and 1/4 acres, located south of State Highway 39 and east of Las Misiones Boulevard. The zoning for San José development is R1B and R1A, and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plan.
You want to get to it?
Sure. We'll pack it.
And just go ahead of each.
Comments from planning, engineering, and utility coordination.
Or just go to the.
Right there.
Water utilities and traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Hello, Mr. Chairman. Wayne with Fortis Engineering. We agree with all the comments except for traffic item number six. If you could take it back to the, I'll be happy to explain it. They're asking us to connect Cervando with an existing street that's in a previously platted area. This would require us to go through lots that are built on, that we no longer own. We, it just, it's, they're asking for something that can't be done. If you go back to the plat, I'll show you where it's plating. Because this doesn't work right. What they're saying is they're asking to extend this street up to this street. This is previously recorded. There's a house, there's drainage outlets right here, there's a lot owned by somebody else, and they go, the property lines go all the way to there, so I can't get through there. It would also create other traffic issues. And for the record, too, this is a plat that appeared in front of this commission, I mean, the master plan has appeared in this exact layout in front of this commission multiple times. Traffic's had the opportunity to make this comment before, first time we're hearing of it, and it's just not attainable. So, I mean, can't do it.
I agree. It's just not doable at this point in time.
No, sir, it isn't.
Not at all.
So the rest of the comments we're fine with, but we'd like that one strictly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? The engineer? No? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve striking comment number six from traffic safety.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next item is preliminary consideration of replat of Lot 1, Block 1, 501 Imperial Partners. Another subdivision plat into Lot 1A, Block 1, Block, I guess it's I, 501 Imperial Partners. Another subdivision replat. The intent is multifamily?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is 501 Imperial Partners LP and 501 Webb Realty LLC. The engineer of record is Fova Consulting LLC, approximately 15 acres, located west of McPearson and north of Shiloh. The zoning for this one lot development is R2 and B3, and the proposed use is multifamily. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed, the existing plat and the proposed replat. Comments from planning, utility coordination, water utilities. Traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Fernando Blanco, representing Fova Consulting.
And you agree with the comments?
Yeah. Yeah, we concur with all of your comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the engineer? The commissioners?
No, no questions.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. We have a second.
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 A second from Commissioner Duñez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. All right? The next item we have is reconsideration of the following preliminary plats and preliminary replats. Preliminary reconsideration of the plat of Park View at Century South Park subdivision Phase 1 and granting of a variance to reduce a front yard setback from 20 feet to 10 feet on Lots 1 and 2, Block 1 and Lots 1 and 2, Block 2. The intent is residential.
For the record, STX Land Development LLC. The engineer of record is Sherfy Engineering Company, approximately 7.3 acres, located south of Jaime Zapata and west of Century City Boulevard. The zoning for the 45 lot development is R1A. The proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed platte, comments from planning, utility coordination, water utilities, traffic safety, parks and leisure, additional comments from Texas that have already been provided to the engineer, and the proposed motion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Frank Estrada and the commission, apologize. Frank Estrada with Sherfy Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
Frank, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On the variance that you're asking for in those lots, what is the depth of those lots?
The depth is approximately, if I can zoom in there, but it's probably sitting somewhere about, if I'm not mistaken, it's probably about 85 to 90 feet, somewhere around there.
All four of them?
It's the two, yes, the two of the loop south, but that's the shortest leg, the other sides are probably sitting at about 150, somewhere around there.
About 150?
110, 120, these on the corner right here, if I can get in, these right here are going to be a little longer because they extend all the way into the cul-de-sac, but right here is probably sitting about 110.
So, but you want variances in those 110s also?
Yes, sir, we're kind of bounded, on the east side over here is owned, on the west side, it is owned by the city of Laredo, and this is another, this is another developer sitting right here, and it's kind of hard to get into the typical cul-de-sac framework that we typically do, so we had to have these lots the way they were, and that's why we requested a variance.
Yeah, it's so that you can get that radius on that cul-de-sac.
Correct, yes, we need to maintain that radius.
Yeah, okay, I get you. Okay, any questions for the engineer from the commissioners? All right, if there's no questions, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve subject to the comments, yeah.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Duñez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carries, thank you. Next item is preliminary reconsideration of the platte of North Webb Industrial Park Phase 3, the intent is residential.
The intent is what?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant.
I'm sorry, industrial.
Oh, industrial.
It's industrial.
Industrial.
Industrial, I'm sorry.
Okay.
For the record, the applicant is Saur Incorporated, engineer of record is Holland Engineering and Surveying, approximately 155 acres located south of Beltway Parkway and west of Interstate 35, the zoning for this 18 lot development is currently AG, and the proposed use is industrial. General location, aerial view, street view, the proposed platte, comments from planning, utility coordination, water utilities, traffic safety, and the proposed motion.
Okay, yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the commission, my name is Miguel Jimenez, for the record, with Holland Engineering, and we concur with staff comments.
Okay, any questions for the engineer?
No, it's, it's facile, three, well, that, no, the most.
No other questions? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
My proposed motion approved.
Motion, second?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. The next item is one that Commissioner Ralde loves to do.
Love these, what item numbers have again?
Item number nine.
Nine.
Nine through what, nine A through nine B?
This is nine A and nine B.
Okay, I want, I make a motion to hear items nine A through nine B together.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now you need to make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve items nine A and nine B.
Second, and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Want to work the commission?
Carries, thank you, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries, thank you.